Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to a regular session to go Dale City Council for June 20th, 2023. Saint Division, give the roll call.
Yep, Steve Johnston.
Here.
Dave Jones.
Here.
Ellie Casey.
Eric.
Andy Holm.
Here.
Myla Wolling.
Here.
So we're missing Lauren Meeker and Filberto Ontavillas.
I know it's Lauren, I received a note asking to be excused. Filberto, uh, it'll take a motion to excuse them both, anybody want to?
Well, with one that's already requested or glorified.
That's it, just one.
Do you want to do them separate?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll motion to exclude, to excuse Lauren Meeker. I'll second that.
It's been moved in second to excuse Lauren Meeker from attending tonight's Goldendale City Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, what, quick question on Phil, is he working tonight?
I don't know, but at least you can call in.
Yeah.
Since he's in the call center. We'll see, because very often he gets there just a few minutes late, he may still be here.
And then we'll need a motion for the other one as well.
For Phil.
Yep.
So do we need a motion for not excusing him?
Yeah, they'll either need a motion to excuse him and then you can say yes or no.
Right.
Or not excuse him, whatever you want, whatever motion one of you wants to make.
A motion's always made in the positive, and then you go right up or down.
Yep. We have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to excuse Filberto. I'll second it.
Been moved in second to excuse Filberto Ontavillas from attendance at the Goldendale City Council meeting for June 20th, 2023. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have, who's KTM on the screen?
Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't tell me.
Oh, okay.
It's just going to put up.
Do we have anybody in the council room for the closed public comment or on the screen, listening by telephone or by Zoom? Hearing none?
No.
Go on to public hearing, we don't have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. We have agenda and agenda needs to be amended to include the addition of ordinance number 1527.
I so moved that we approved the agenda and consent agenda with the number one ordinance, number 1527.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second to adopt the approval, excuse me, been moved in second to approve the agenda for this meeting as amended and the consent agenda. If there's not questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't have presentations tonight, but for department reports, we'll begin with, Chief Smith.
Okay, um, not much new since last council. We did schedule active shooter training for July 19th, so that's it. We had a pretty response from the ambulance, the fire, and the sheriff's department, so hopefully we'll be able to combine all agencies together. I think that's really good. Hopefully planning about two to three this year, different locations, and so I'm gonna be on one scheduled maybe September, we're hoping at PUD, and then we have the building next door to us, and we're trying to do something there too, so. We're just kind of sending people to training, we're still waiting for people to get out of the academy, and so looking forward to that, we're down to one month and we get our first recruit back, and so we're kind of chomping at the bit to get more people, we have some candidates that are getting on the list, so we're looking to, still no latrals, so we're probably gonna do another entry level cadet and get them to the academy as soon as possible, so.
Very good. Thank you for the report. Actually, Hall is not here tonight. I don't think we've received a report of any, I know they've had a couple of fires they've attended and successfully fought. The next department report will be the Goldendale Public Works.
So, yeah, we've experienced some, still experienced some vandalism at the city parks. Nothing out of the norm, just the typical people staying in the bathrooms at night when they have the opportunity, the, you know, somebody drove across the lawn, didn't double it, and some graffiti, those type of issues, nothing out of the, I guess, the norm, it always is going to happen at some time or not. The airport, just so you guys are aware, if you hear rumors, we did have the airport shut down for about two hours this morning. A neighbor, a rancher's cattle broke through the fence and got in there, so we shut it down until we were able to track the property owner down and have them come get their cattle out of there and repaired the fence. The airport, we're working on, still working on, the electrician's up there working on the power supply, getting all the electronic pay stuff, that actually reminds me, we need to activate the cell card, which I'll get to. So that's moving forward, and hopefully that'll be wrapping up very quickly. And then Public Works was back out there. Last winter when we dug the trench, it got full of water and everything got saturated. Now that the material's been dried out, they went back in lab this last week and finished filling the ditch up and restoring the ground, so that's completed. This Public Works has had a couple of broken water mains, both of the water breaks are on the repair list from the Public Works trust fund money over the next few years, so hopefully when that gets done, then we won't have a big problem. They've been working on water meters, some of them just replacing them, some of them just evaluating if they need to be replaced. It's usually pretty common to replace a water meter about every five to six years. The Public Works will be continuing crack sealing. They will be, Friday is their normal day off, it's Friday, they will be working all day, they figure they need that. They want to get the machine back as quick as possible, so they want to pick that to late Friday and they want to work all Friday to get what they plan on getting done. They had a late start because when the delivery outfit was bringing it down Spokane, the vehicle was in a wreck and the tank got destroyed in that wreck, so they had to bring another one down. Been working with, this is more on the administrative side, been working with Tony Micky, our labor attorney, on the pay incentive agreement. That should be hopefully in the next council meeting coming back in front of you guys. We're just working on the detailed language and trying to get that cleaned up. The, let's see. Oh, the cemetery out here, I've read through all that documentation, if any of the council members, I was gonna make a copy for everybody, but there's so much information in there. The file is on my desk, if you want to come in and more, look through it, that's fine. I've read through it, it appears to me, even though there was discussion of phasing it in, the motion was to adopt, and they adopted the whole thing planned at one time. That, that's how, if you read the whole thing, that's kind of how it reads. So there was never any one phase of it, even though it was talked in phases, it was not adopted that way, it wasn't really presented that way. Do you have a different take on that?
No, not really, I don't quite recall actually the details. I thought it was gonna be separate, but I, because it seemed like we reapproved of the, of the church and the classroom and the building, and I kind of thought the cemetery was gonna be separate, be talked about later on, but maybe I didn't understand it when I made the full motion, whatever, but anyway.
Well, when they, the reason why I draw that conclusion is when they presented the one plan that was adopted, it doesn't mention anything on phases on that.
Yeah.
It was very clear that they were going to be working on it over several years, and that the council did mention about them coming back and giving them annual reports, which has not occurred on their progress. But it appears that the, to me, interreading the document, that it was passed, that one all at one time.
One other thing, Pat, I remember talking and saying that they had to maybe landscape it, or we just talked about it, best if they landscape the cemetery.
That is in there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, and then something, we'll draft a letter to them that they need to, you know, proceed with some landscaping now that they're moving into their phases, as each, even though they're not called phases, as they move through their project, each portion of that, the cemetery being separated from the building, separated from the parking lot, they need to, when they do those projects, complete their greenery.
Okay, yeah, right.
Requirements.
Yes, okay, good.
I've been working on, so we met the, the committee for ordinance committee, we met, and there was some, which one we'll address tonight, but there was some areas that they wanted to focus on, and I've been working on tracking those down and doing the language changes when I get some time, and that'll be something to be going back to them probably early next week, where we can go back and look at those ordinances, and then they can give us more, the committee can give me more input of any modifications they want, additional modifications, change to that. Most of that has to do with around land use activities. So we're getting ready to close out the, by the end of this week, I have to close out the shoreline management plan grant, and we're starting on closing out the incubator grant as well. That'll probably be next week when we close that one out, which is gonna take a little bit of time to get completely closed out and get all the documents, yeah. Other than that, I think that's about it.
Thank you, thanks, Pat. Go to court, an awful lot of work. We're going now to council business, and the first item, the wastewater treatment plant, de-watering, screw press, bid optional, Pat, I'm in charge of all that.
Yeah.
It's the next reading session.
It's one in the back. So we, at 10:00 AM on June 9th, we opened up bids, we did, by default, only one bid we could accept, the other bid came in four hours late, so we could not accept it, it was past the deadline. So, so FKC is the only acceptable bid in the amount of $286,290, and staff recommends approval. We decided to, it was cheaper for the city to, given the price of this piece of equipment, it was cheaper for the city to bid them out separately instead of bidding it under the contract project, so that's why we did it the way we did it. We didn't, we didn't want them marking it up, because usually on these items, they'll do a 5% to 10% markup, which on $286,000 is substantial. Even though the other bid doesn't count, they were very, very competitive bids.
Again, FKC is?
That's just, FKC, is that what they call themselves?
Oh, oh, okay.
I tried to look for what's actually, but it just says FKC.
Oh, okay, I thought it was abbreviation for something, okay.
You're thinking of KFC, isn't it?
Yeah, right.
Okay, I have a question.
Yeah.
This is just addressing the piece of equipment itself, what about installation?
No, it doesn't, this is just for the purchase of the equipment, it does come with, let me see it here, I think I put it here, oh, no, it'll be on notice of intent. Then it does come with the warranty and all other apparatuses needed for it, like the control box, all that stuff is included in this price. Does that make sense to you?
Well, no, I'm referring to, you know, you've got this misty water.
As far as the.
Sitting here.
Right. No, it doesn't include where it's going to sit, any of that stuff, that's all engineered doc and stuff. This is just the piece of equipment and the control panels that are need to operate it, which then the, you know, when the engineers are done, we're getting ready to move the bid on the other stuff, the place where it was set will be designed, where it's gonna be mounted permanently, and then all that electrical work will be designed at that time of how it's going to be wired together and where the control panel will sit.
Okay, so then the installation part is a part of the?
Yeah.
The main?
Yeah, yeah, we just bought the piece of equipment and the instrument panels separately in the same funding.
Any other questions or comments? Staff has recommended approval, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize staff to proceed with the City of Goldendale's notice of intent to award and purchase contract to FKC in the amount of $286,290, which includes the additive bid item.
Which was the other documents that we were just talking about?
Okay.
Or the other equipment, so.
Oh, I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to authorize staff to proceed with the City of Goldendale's notice of intent to award and purchase contract to FKC in the amount of $286,290, which includes the additive bid item. Any further questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. Motion passing. The next item is the Six Year Street Plan, we probably have more questions on that from the public than anything, do we have that, and we do, and I'll ask Pat to present that topic as well.
Yeah, so Washington State law requires this annually dubbed a six-year street and approval plan after a public hearing, I'm not asking for adoption tonight, I'm just presenting this. We went through the list that was established, the engineer and I went through the list that was established by the, the Public Works Committee, we added those elements that we felt that were eligible for funding. That's really what this, this list is intended for under the RCW, is what, you know, as for funding opportunities. We provided what we felt based on their PCI scores, I know there's a couple of the PCI scores missing in the document, which I can write in. But, so what the PCI score is, is a rating of the road condition for what we're asking to do. So you'll see like some higher numbers here, which are 77 and 72, and if you notice, those have to do with chip sealing, because when you're doing chip sealing, to be eligible for that, you want your road in better condition, so it shows that it's a salable road, and we're just doing preventive maintenance, the lengthiness of life. The lower numbers, like 24, 32, yeah, there's some mixed ears there, but those numbers are basically saying the road is at its life expectancy and the asphalt has to either be ground out or a complete reconstruction where you put new base in instead of just a grounded overlay. And, yeah.
Are these numbers just like for the street itself, or not including sidewalks and curbs and all that?
Well, with, with TIV money, there's always an evaluation of sidewalks to go with that when we do the project. Anytime Washington State that you're even doing an overlay, particularly TIV will come out and evaluate mainly, they'll evaluate the whole sidewalk, but they, they're mainly looking at the ADA ramps to make sure they're compatible with the day standards, and if they are not, we will have to, during any project, revamp those, take those out, and put new ones in.
Okay.
And you have a question?
Yeah. Even though they've got a low rating, like this pointed out, 24, 24, 32, are they still going to be eligible for the TIV funds eventually if we want?
Yeah, yeah, that's why, they're, the 24, 24, so that's for reconstruct, those numbers, if you look, when we say reconstruct, reconstruct, or new construction and reconstruct, the lower the number is for reconstruct, the higher the number, they want a higher number for pavement preservation, such as crack sealing and chip sealing, because they're two different programs. So they don't want to spend much money for us to come in here and do a bunch of crack sealing and chip sealing on the road that's at its life expectancy, that's only gonna make it another year or two and fall apart. Does that make sense?
Well, kinda, except you've got Pine Street earmarked for chip seal, and it's shot.
It is shot, and.
That'd be a waste of money and resources.
Yeah, you know, I'll talk to Dustin on that one, we can look at modifying that. My concern with that, it's a dead-end street, I don't know, we thought our options would be better to ask for chip seal, and we made, because TIV does not like to fund dead-end streets.
Even though there's, what, two, three million dollars worth of homes on that street?
They like, they've gotten better about it, but I'll, we'll call and see if they, they'll even consider reconstruct on it. They do rate it, I just don't, and it rates very poorly, I just didn't get the rating in there.
Okay, well, the ratings are what they are at this point for sure, but this lends the opportunity to have some more discussion regarding LIDs and that 5% sales tax fund that was earmarked specifically for streets such as Pine Street, or side streets that are hard to get funding for.
Yeah.
In fact, you know, the crew, the Public Works crew did, I think, a fantastic job, that light box over here.
That, that may be what we end up having to do.
My goodness, they saved a couple of chunks of street, the people were gone.
Well, especially the, was it Northwest Second, that loop surround, that last, I mean, that's never been paved, I mean, that's always been, I mean, now it's a paved street.
Yeah, so I mean.
And that, that may be in the, what we end up doing it is ourselves, my recommendation, if we are gonna do it in itself, is to leave the, the alligator crack, you know what I mean by alligator crack?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alligator cracked, rock or base there, and then use what's called petromani. It's, you know, like how you wrap a, when you build a house now, they wrap it in a plastic, well, this is like an 80 mil rubber layer that's glued down, and then we will glue that down on it, then we'll lay the asphalt over the top of that, and why you, why you do that is, the older asphalt and the newer asphalt will contract and expand at different times, they'll, they'll shift against each other, and then they'll, if you don't put that layer in there, the cracks down below within a few years will start transferring through, so we need to put, it's like a slip sheet, for lack of a better term, it's, it's just so that they, and they can move freely apart from each other without causing that transfer of cracking.
Well, and I, personally, I think Pine Street would be a prime candidate to try an LID.
We can try an LID on it.
Yeah, you know, I'd be, we haven't done an LID in years, you know, since they rebuilt Columbus here, that's been some time ago. And again, like I say, good opportunity.
When was Columbus, was that 20 years ago?
At least.
Was that in 2000?
Well, 96, I remember, I saw the, my grandfather's funeral procession, it was still the Reginald Highway, well, Columbus used to be the highway.
2002.
Early, yeah.
So it's been 20 years.
20, 25 years or more, right in that.
Well, I was in the process of purchasing that property, that was about 96, and.
Late 90s, probably.
Late 90s, probably, and, because I got, hey, I was on the, on the hook for two chunks of that LID, almost $30,000, but it, it's a low interest loan, it's not gonna break the pocketbook of property order, and you get back, for every dollar that you spend on that LID, you get back five in increased property value, because it really does affect it, not to mention usability, my goodness. And Pine Street is gonna be in the same category as Post was, now Post was done with an LID some years ago, it sits on an inclined, good base, that street would be there for 100 years if it's reconstructed properly, because the drain, you got the drainage and everything, I mean.
Yeah, it was originally, it doesn't look like it was very thick chip sealed to begin with, anyway.
It hasn't had much maintenance on it for as long as it could really come.
Yeah, well, it's.
Just wear it out.
It's so gone now, there's a lot of saving the chip seal, but chip seal is one of those things you gotta kind of do every seven years to keep up on it, particularly if you're building a road base, like most county roads out here are chip sealed, I said, but they've been doing it for, you know, you know, the last 70, 80 years. And you gotta stick up on it, because you're, you're only gaining three quarters of inch every time you do it. If you, if you wanna rebuild it with chip seal, that's a possibility, but I would automatically recommend, which is usually cheaper than asphalt, that you would wanna put, you'd wanna chip seal it in the same year and then come back and put another layer over the top of that after, you know, another month, and then wait next year and then come put another layer on top of that, and that would at least give you, you know, an inch, or almost a couple inches there.
This machine that grinds the asphalt, assuming those are only owned by the companies that do the actual reconstruction and.
Well, the city can buy, we can buy what's called a zipper and attach it to, and that's what most contractors use anymore, and they attach to a bucket of a, usually a pretty good sized front end loader, and the engines on those units and everything, and then the, they just set it down and grind it and drive it with the front end loader, so the city could buy one themselves. But my, they'll break it up pretty easily, but if it's gonna be broke up enough to regrade it and repack it for base, I don't know that it's there with chip seal, with asphalt it would.
Right.
Because asphalt's all repackaged, so when you, when you're. Because asphalt's already packaged, so when you, when you're breaking it up, it's breaking up on smaller chunks. But given that this is alligator crap, it it's going to come out in bigger chunks. It's just going to fling it out, so.
That's true. That's true. But anyway, yeah, if you would, uh, give that some strong consideration. Nobody will help you out on that as far as Pine Street's concerned.
Yeah, I I'll get a hold of, I know there's a, I'll get a hold of A W C. I know there's an L I D specialist in Washington State. And I'll see if I can get a hold of him to set up a meeting to have him come out on site and look at it and see what his evaluation is, if it's worth our time to do an L I D on it or, and what the new criteria and rules are. And I think that's, would be a good one to have the Public Works Committee at, so he can explain it all to you.
Well, regardless of what their new criteria may be, it's going to boil down to, it's, I'm not sure what it is, sixty, forty, seventy, thirty from the property orders. It doesn't have to be a majority, but it's got to be six out of ten, seven out of ten.
Seven, super majority.
Well, seven out of ten.
An L I D, yeah.
And I don't see, you know, if you would draw up the paperwork, the basic that describes the basic premise of it, I I'd go door to door and present it to those folks.
Well, why don't you, um, I'm going to be gone tomorrow, potentially Thursday. My wife's going to be at the hospital tomorrow, so I'm going to be there with her. The, why don't you come in early next week and let's sit down and talk about it and see what we can get going on it?
Certainly, certainly. And then back to that, uh, five percent sales tax street fund. It would be nice to see the documentation if you, if the staff could flesh that out and find out.
We we have it, so.
I'd like to see the documents on it regarding it. Because it sounds like there's some ambiguity involving it as far as specific use.
I believe it's only a point five percent.
Yeah.
No, five percent.
Half percent.
Half percent.
Yeah, that's what it said.
Okay.
Five percent, pray it on. Boost the revenue. But yeah, if you would, and then we can have some more discussion later on regarding that. Because I think would be pertinent and important to, even though it's a long time after the fact, to pin that down and and be specific with that money. Because like I say, originally, it was intended for these side street projects that just don't ever get any funding.
Yeah.
You know, and it builds up over time, even though it's, what is it, sixty, forty with the fire department? And that's sixty percent, you know, is built up. And it's, I I feel it's been misused over the years, using it to leverage, uh, bigger projects, pulling the funds out of it to, for your front money, for larger projects, things like that. Uh, which, what can you say? But it would be nice to to pin that down and, like I say, bring it back to the council and be be a little more precise on it. Because it certainly will, even though it it's like starting from first base, so what? We're moving, we'll be moving forward. I mean, the city's not going to...
Well, the, yeah, not to get off topic here too far, we're kind of going out there. But why don't you come in next week and talk to me? Because we we have some, I have some other ideas I've been talking with the county about. It has to do with, um, we could be using the Leighton Box, which is the paper, more often if there was an asphalt, um, way to make asphalt here. And that's something that the county, I've been talking with, uh, I started talking last year with Gordy and Jeff both. Now, I think Jeff's going to be in charge, so that's something we can go back to talking about.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Pat, this is a almost five million dollar fiscal impact. Are you satisfied with the direction on how to proceed? I think the discussion's been good. Do you need anything more than that? But there's a call for a motion.
No, yeah, it, no, it doesn't call for a motion. I just need a direction. If you guys want to modify this or do something different with it. And I will clarify, I will add the score numbers in there. And then, um, we'll look at changing Pine Street to, uh, an overlay or something more than just, uh, see what we can do there and where our luck is.
Because even though this is a six-year street plan, it can still be modified every year.
It gets modified every year automatically, yes.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to do it every year.
Yeah.
And well, again, that list that I gave you, I, you know, identified just two, a couple of blocks. You know, some different areas over here.
Yeah, we were going to tie into a bigger project, is what we figured would be best. But, yeah, but we're, I don't want to make the list so big because then it looks unrealistic because we can't complete it in six years and then they're going to, T I V is going to just laugh at us because that's not the intent of it is. But, um, but we do still have the list and and it's in this file. So as some of this stuff comes off, we can add those back in.
Yeah, well, in regards to that, that area down there that you just mentioned, uh, has already been reworked. And I can't remember why we left off that one block coming towards Columbus there.
Money.
Well, I just...
It always comes down to money.
Well, yeah, for sure. Anyway, anyway.
One block's about another quarter of a million.
But they did, they did half the town now.
That's pretty big for us, thanks.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll I'll come in. We might have to remind me.
We'll consider...
I'll make a note of that.
The discussion, uh...
Okay.
Discussion complete and the instructions understood, I think, by the council and certainly by Pat. The next item on the agenda, resolutions. We don't have a resolution, but the next item, check ordinances. We have ordinance number one, five, two, seven, one, five, two, seven, to consider. This has to do with placing a moratorium on RV parks.
Yeah, so one of the topics when I met, when we met with the the ordinance committee was, uh, RV, um, parks being allowed in two different zones. One was highway commercial and the other one's general commercial. In reading the goal one of the City of Goldale's comp land use comp plan, policy one point six says, "Public opinion regarding issues shall be brought and considered as part of the decision-making process." So when they're an outright use in a commercial district, which in C two, in my opinion, it doesn't meet the intent of our comp plan at all or our ordinance, which is, says it's supposed to be retail sales. So what I'm recommending is if we could, uh, put a moratorium on this, which we can do for a period of, well, this would be a six-month moratorium. We don't need to have a public hearing for a period of six months or six weeks, excuse me. So this will give us some time in the committee to work through these ordinances and get these changed and brought back, um, to the council for recommendation. My concern is, is that they, there should be, particularly with an RV park, there should be a public hearing process. And and the the way to achieve that is to, instead of having them as a principal use, it's having them as a conditional use. And that way, it it involves, uh, the public and particularly those property owners who are surrounding an, um, an RV park to have public comment in on that decision.
I'd like to clear up one point, Pat. When you're talking about, it's the fourth, or the fourth section under, from the end up, it calls for an immediate moratorium for a period of up to six months.
Yes.
Is that correct or six weeks? I wouldn't show them.
Well, no, it it, the moratorium would be for a period of six months.
Okay.
In six weeks, we have to come back to a public hearing.
Okay.
The the city council must hold a public hearing on the moratorium within sixty days of the passing of the ordinance. So if you guys pass this tonight, within sixty days, we have to come back to a public hearing and have a public hearing and justify our, why we're doing this, which this kind of RV does. It is where, and, you know, in my opinion, we're not meeting the intent of a comp plan. And in one particular section, we're not meeting the intent of the code. Where it, like in C two, like we said, it's it's more has to do with retail sales. And if an RV park really has nothing to do with retail sales. Now, that doesn't mean you can't modify, but that, or whatever you guys want to do, we just need to, uh, change the language to meet the intent of the comp plan and, or change the the intent, um, of the ordinance to reflect the uses that are there.
And apparently, the language in here also states that we can renew that every six months.
You can only, well, you can only renew it one time every six, yeah. Yeah, you you can't keep it in...
Indefinitely?
Indefinitely, no. No, the whole intent of this is that we've, you know, the the committee found an issue. And staff agrees with that issue and we need to rectify that issue. What the moratorium is, is to, to keep the status quo until staff and the committee can get everything together back to the council, get it, go through a public hearing process, and then get the ordinance adopted back in place.
Oh, okay, in other words, to clean up the codes and the land use language.
Yes.
Good idea.
Need a motion from us for this?
Yes, yes, the, by the council.
Can I move to adopt ordinance number fifteen, twenty-seven?
I'll second.
It's been approved to second and two. Approve ordinance number one, five, two, seven, uh, a moratorium on RV park construction for six months. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any approach? Thank you. That's a very clear document, I hope.
Yeah, just, if anybody sees any typos or script errors or anything, let me know. I wrote this in about an hour and a half this afternoon, so it was running pretty fast, so.
And amongst several visitors.
Yeah.
Makes it even harder. The next item, thank you for the agreement on the ordinance. That's essential, I think, for how we stay ahead of the curve on RV parks. Report of officers will begin with the city council members and will begin with Steve Johnston and Rayon.
Oh, what, uh... Project, the church cemetery project, uh, sounds to me like it's all over the place. Is there any way we can tighten that up?
Yeah, I mean, if you, yeah, well, for one, I I think we need to a- address the issues that they, they, that were conditions of put on, that were clear conditions put on by the commission that made the decision. And, um, such as what Lord or Mylan brought up, excuse me, um, on the greenery and and get get that addressed. Actually, um, ask them to politely come back and give an update, if not to that committee, at least to the city council, uh, what their plans are and what their timeline is. I I think that would be helpful. And and then while you're in there next week, Steve, um, if you want, I can make a copy for you or you can read it and then you can take it over, read it. And, um, maybe that'll key some ideas you may have.
Okay. Regarding the original agreement?
The original, yeah, staff report, the original conditions established by the commission. And, and, you know, everybody reads things differently and, um, read it and see what what your conclusion is on it. Maybe it'll be different than mine.
Well, I know, you know, you deal with lots of projects. And this one here is off the rails in regards to following the original perception and and ideas that were projected. I don't see why they shouldn't be held to the same standards.
Certainly.
I mean, they're just doing what they want to do. And apparently, I, I'm, hopefully it's in the document that you're going to show me, the language was there from the beginning, that they, there was plans to build a cemetery.
It's it's on the map, yes, that they planned on building a cemetery.
It's in the language, too.
The only place we could find it in the language is in, was under comments, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That's not very binding. Well, okay, I'll stop in, we'll see it. I just, I'm confused with the way it's...
What's that? Many Minute College, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thanks, thank you.
Dave Johnson.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Hey, I just wanted to remind everybody that, uh, Community Days is coming up soon. Right after the Fourth of July, the weekend after, July eighth. Yeah, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, they've been working real hard. I've been to a few of their meetings. We're bringing back the scavenger, huh? So don't worry about that.
Been there for today.
I noticed that they, uh, finished up that next mural over on, uh, Columbus. Man, that looks nice. Good job to everybody that was involved in that. I took a, I stopped, just stopped signing a little bit too long, looking at it, and someone honked at me.
Oh, boy.
Sorry, I was... Thanks, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Dave. Elegation.
I don't have anything.
Andy.
Nothing tonight.
Well, yeah, I'll just, uh, continue on what Dave was saying, that the, uh, Community Days is coming up. The Chamber's got a full plate this summer, the different events they're doing, and this fall. And they're, they're busy working on it. And I'm continuing working with the, getting potential funding for for the airport and also working on some other projects, so, yeah, that's what I have, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. On the, uh, the mayor's comments, I want to give you a picture of some of the future work that we're headed for. Because it has to do with the airport. And we'll be, uh, first, the Airport Committee, it was a large committee, worked very, very hard and set the path for the airport's future. And that committee will be dissolved as a, one that has a limited time, they've they've performed and reached that. But we'll be forming a advisory airport board that will be a smaller group to be able to make the key decisions as we go on forward with the airport. It's very similar to what's done at the Dallasport Airport with the advisory board there. And I think, I think it'll work well for us. The work of that committee was absolutely incredible. They did great, great work, and that's what we're working on as we go through this. Fuel was one of them. Wide runway was another, longer runway was another. So we're on the path that the committee set. And this advisory board will, will be a smaller group to manage the results of that committee. I think it'll work well. I just want you to know that it may not be coming up this next council meeting, I think it will. We have all the documents from Rick Lundin, who's really driven a lot of the preparation for the advisory board. But we're working out with Pat. We need to be able to bring that in as a presentation and begin to work on it. And that's all I have on the mayor's side. Pat, anything on city administrator?
Well, I kind of went over that stuff, but I kind of do it all by myself.
Thank you, thank you, though. We appreciate all that you're doing.
I appreciate that.
Both of those posts. We now have open public comment. So anybody in the room or on the line or on the Zoom broadcast that has a public comment they would like to make, the limit is three minutes.
Oh, no answer.
None at all?
Nancy?
Uh, not tonight.
You know she had one. We don't have executive session, so now we need a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
It moved and seconded to adjourn the city council for June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. All of it.
Aye.
That just seemed way too short.